Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to our July 7th meeting. And I'd like to call this meeting older and ask Mr. Slade, if he would, for a word of prayer.
Let's pray. Of this time of year, we think about the freedoms that we enjoy and how fortunate we are to be blessed as a people, Lord, to have the freedoms that have been given by you, Lord, to our, to our country, the freedoms that we enjoy every day to come and participate in our government. Father, the how you, you provide this place for us to gather together. You have given us leadership and appointed them with special skills and abilities, Father, to use in furtherance and service to their fellow man. I thank you for that commitment that they make to be here, to come and participate with others in county government. Father, I think about the men and women that serve and protect us and how they take good care of us. Father, thank you for these, these incredible freedoms and privileges that you bless us with. Help us never to take them for granted in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. All right, public comments? We've got anybody for public comments?
Mr. President, I, I wanted to make a special word of welcome, if you'll allow me.
Okay.
We have visitors with us today from the Office of State Auditor, and I want to bring them to your attention. We have with us today Mr. Jason Hackett, who is one of the members of the Office of State Audit. Joe Seymour also with the Office of State Audit. And they have with them today two individuals who are summer interns, and they are working specifically in the Legal Division for the Office of State Audit. And they have not, based on what I have told, been told, they've not had an opportunity to see how Board of Supervisors meetings go. And so they are here today. I, I wanted to mention them in particular, Addison Russell and Jordan Cobb, who are here today to observe and to watch. And I wanted to issue a special welcome to all of them and say how proud we are to have them at Rankin County. And we hope that this will not only be the first occasion they've had to see a Board of Supervisors, but it will be the best Board of Supervisors meeting that they will see. And so I'm, I'm pleased to have them with us. I thought I'd give that special welcome.
Craig, did they bring a report with them?
I, I don't know about any report, but you know what? They're, they're privileged in that this year, we're not waiting on the Office of State Audit to provide us with our audit. So we're, we have a special, a different kind of audit this year. So OSA is not actually conducting our audit this year. So they're off the hook.
Okay.
We're, we're proud to have y'all. Would you, either one of y'all like to come up and speak, or y'all good? Okay, I was just messing with them. I seen either one of them jumped up real quick. All right, old business.
There's another, Tim, Saville, Saville, is he here?
I don't. Nobody signed in. He was on here, but nobody signed in.
I'll make a motion to approve old business.
Second.
Brad made a motion to approve old minutes. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Has everybody had time to read over the consent?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion to approve. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Ms. Caroline Gilbert.
Good morning.
Good morning. I believe you dyed your hair.
And I grew a little.
Oh, oh, yes.
Um, no, good morning. I'm, I'm Dana Tucker. I'm her chief deputy tax collector. I'm Caroline. I'm just here to speak on her behalf. A, authority to publish twice of the Rankin County 2024 tax sale to be held on August 25th, 2025, and publish separate notification for online auction format.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
B, request to void and refund mobile home taxes paid to account 27149. The aforementioned property was erroneously taxed as a mobile home when assessed to real property. I am requesting that the home tax bill be voided and that the 2023 and 2024 mobile home taxes be refunded to the owner in the amount of $1,268.05.
Make a motion?
Second.
Made a motion. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion?
Let me explain this a little bit for folks that are listening or wins. Sometimes we're taxing and we don't know the mobile home has been moved.
Right.
And we hadn't been notified.
Right.
And then we send them a bill and then they realize later on that, so we refunding that money.
Right, absolutely. Makes sense.
All right.
Motion carries. All right, now we have Ms. Stacy McNich, the Tax Assessor. Well, we got a lot of changes going on today. Good morning.
I'm Kristi Lewis. I'm representing Ms. Stacy McNich with the Tax Assessor's Office. Under item A, petition to adjust the 2024 home sale exemption supplemental rule.
Motion approved.
I second it. Brad made a motion. I seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Under item B, petition to change the assessments on 2024 real and personal property for 2020, 2021, and 2023. It noted on their real property assessment that it's actually the personal property.
That was actually the personal, not the real?
Yes, sir. Under the 2020, 2021, 22, 23.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Also, I also need to move item F from Craig's section up to the assessor's section.
Is this the, the setting? It's on their agenda as item C now, so.
Okay, so adjust to item C.
Okay.
We would like to request the 2025 real and personal property assessment rules and accept written objections on Monday, August the 4th of 2025 at 9:00 a.m. And set public hearing for Friday, August the 15th at 2025, 9:00 a.m. And also authorized to publish public notice in the Rankin County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Ryan Grantham, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So basically, I am responsible for the Rankin County Emergency Conference of Emergency Management Plan. This is something that's required of us. Every five years, we get a new one, and then we update it yearly. I'm just asking for permission for the Board President to sign. But in short, short now, 77 pages worth of stuff is basically how we respond to emergencies in Rankin County. We try to have a plan or a guideline for each type of emergency that we have. So that, along with the sheltering plan, this is required for the big grant that we get, the EMPG grant that we get every year.
I make a motion?
Second.
Made a motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Before Mike starts speaking on this approval of these permits, I'd like, if y'all willing to, let's start putting these permits on consent agenda.
Does anybody have a problem with that? I mean, unless, and we can always look at it on consent.
Yep.
If it's something we want to look further into and pull it out.
With this, we were just talking about how, how did we get to the point where we were putting all these utility relocation or installation requests on our primary agenda rather than working through the consent agenda? It goes back more than 10 years ago. I'm guessing sometime around 2012. We had some utility installation projects that were ongoing primarily in District 2. I want to, my recollection is it was in Castle Woods. And we had one of our utility companies, I don't remember exactly which one it was, but we had an issue where some infrastructure was damaged as a result of utility installation. And we went through a Dickens of a time because there were so many utilities in the area. We went through a big squabble over who was responsible for damaging some storm drains. So when they were installing, they were using that bore technique, and they punched right through a storm drain. And nobody wanted to take responsibility for it. And so the decision was made by the board at that time. We're going to put all of these on the agenda because we wanted to stress when, when we issued a permit, we wanted to stress that if they damaged any infrastructure, they would have to be responsible for it. And so having that discussion on the agenda was helpful at that time. I don't think what anybody anticipated would be that we'd have an agenda that has the better part of 15 or more of these series of utility installation permit requests. And now, 10, you know, fast forward 10 years plus, we have a much different way that we interact with our utilities. And they, they have to go through a much more detailed permitting process on the front end before they get to this point. And so a lot of those old issues of who's going to be responsible? How do we commit them to fixing anything they damage? All of that's now handled through the paperwork on the front end. And they have to submit us detailed drawings and depths, and there's all sorts of stuff.
Well, they still gonna do all of that.
They still have to go through all that. And so I, I think we're in a much better position now. So if you guys feel, you know, better about having it on the consent, we can start carrying these things on the consent. It'll be incumbent upon each individual supervisor to look at the consent closely for these permits, to know who's in my district installing utilities. It's still important to know that. You're going to have constituents who see the workers, who see the trucks, and they don't really know what's going on. And you, so you may get calls. So you're going to have to pay attention to the consent on your own and figure out who do I need to be aware of maybe in my district performing these services.
All right.
Today, I'm going to make a motion to approve A through O on utility permits.
Me and Tim have reviewed all these permits.
I second that motion.
Brad made a motion to approve A through O. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Can I get a motion, Mr. President, to add this to consent agenda?
Yeah, y'all want to make that a formal motion today? We just need to add it.
I'll make a motion to add. Steve, moving forward, all of the permit utilities will be added to the consent agenda.
I second the motion to add it.
Brad made a motion to add to the consent. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve adding this to the consent agenda.
Second.
Brad made a motion to approve it to go to the consent agenda. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Tim Parker, our county engineer. Boy, he slimmed up also.
Do not drag us into that.
50 pounds and grow some hair. Oh, 80? Okay.
I only have one thing for you. Sand Hill Farms, we have the final plat and we're recommending approval of that final plat.
Make motion to approve.
I second it. Steve made a motion. I seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Hey, Chris, one quick question. You said that, uh, HMP is on the punch-out stage of the, on Gunner?
Yes, sir.
And you know when they start back on that, or?
They haven't given me a firm date. Hopefully next week they'll start and they'll have about a week or, week or two week worth of work left to do.
Right, to, to get it knocked out and punch out. Okay.
As soon as they tell me what day they'll be there, I'll let you know.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Mr. Paul Hopper and Mr. John Williamson, who are here on the Sand Hill Farms matter. I just matter, and I just wanted to say how much I appreciate their cooperative spirit working with us on getting that plat approved. And they've just been super communicative and helpful to us. And I, I wish them the best on this development, and it has a lot of promise, and I hope they do really well up there. Thanks, guys. All right. First item under my section are the first two items, gentlemen. Those are both to set public hearings. Let's take those separately since they're on separate dates. The first item is to set a public hearing for July 31st at 9:00 a.m. This is for the Maboom Conditional Use Permit at 9:35, Highway 469 North. This is District 1 property.
I make a motion?
Second.
I made a motion. Dr. McLeod seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Next item is to set a public hearing for August the 4th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. This is for RJ Construction, Inc. This is a conditional use permit for mining operation Rankin Road, District 4 property.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Gentlemen, this relates to the resolution of intent for the purpose of issuing general obligation bonds that the board adopted on June the 2nd. We, as a part of that resolution of intent, you authorize the publication of a notice to go into the newspaper to call for anyone who wishes to speak on the matter of the issuance of general obligation bonds to come to this board meeting, July 7th, at 2020, on 2020, in 2025 at 9:00 a.m. to give any sort of statement or commentary concerning that. So that public hearing is now open, and I will ask if there is anyone here to speak on the matter of the issuance or potential issuance of general obligation bonds. Is there anyone here to speak on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. At this time, I will close that public hearing. We have, the county has received no documentation, no petition as required by state law that would provide for an objection or the calling of an election concerning the potential issuance of general obligation bonds. It's incumbent upon a qualified elector to bring such objection forward. I am aware of no one who has presented to the board an objection, a formal objection or petition that would qualify as a formal objection under state law. And so unless someone else in the room is aware that such a petition has been organized and delivered, I'm looking at my deputy clerk. Okay? We're not aware of that. And so it would be appropriate for us, given that and the fact that the board has now closed its public hearing, it would be appropriate to move to item D, which is the consideration of a potential action to adopt the resolution that authorizes the sale and issuance of Rankin County General Obligation Bonds Series 2025 for the purpose of capital investments, capital improvements that would not otherwise be subject to being constructed, made available, put into use for public purposes. You see that your resolution would be in an amount that it has not yet been determined, but it would be in an amount that cannot exceed $40 million. And it would be for a term length that has not been determined, but that cannot exceed 30 years. And so that is the basic composition of your resolution. It would be appropriate for the board to consider adopting such a resolution so that we can then move forward to the next stage. I want to stress again, no decision has yet been made, because the board hasn't made it, as to the ultimate amount of the issuance and the ultimate term length of the issuance. That is to be determined.
I make a motion to approve this and go forward.
I second that motion. Steve made a motion. I seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
The next item, Mr. President, is item E. This would be authorization of the Board President and/or the County Administrator to execute all documents that may be required to implement and secure the bond issuance that you just voted to move forward with. And the authority of the County Administrator and/or the Board President to do all things that are necessary to effectuate and carry out the board's intentions with respect to that issuance. It's a blanket authority so that we don't have to keep coming back and asking for permission to sign all of the various documentation that will be associated with your bond issuance. And let me just suggest, you don't, you know what you just did with all of those utility permits and moved them to the consent because you didn't have to, want to have to go through them one after the other? You don't want to have an agenda with all of the documents that have to be signed to do all this stuff with the bond issue. So this is a blanket authority that would allow for Sid and Keith to handle those documents as they get presented to us for execution.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Mr. President, we've moved pretty quickly through our regular agenda this time. And so I, I wanted to warn you that we do have the matter of an executive session today. And so that's going to require us to, to wait on some folks that we need to be involved in that. And they may be here sometime between 9:30 and 10 o'clock. I just wanted to point that out to you. We may have to wait a little bit.
You might want to give them a phone call.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Keith Hicks, looking sharp this morning.
You ain't changed one bit.
Good morning, gentlemen. Sorry, it's me.
Hey, you and Mr. Slade's the only two that's, you know, had, had a do-over.
We try. First item under my section is the declaration. We've got three fire trucks that are, have been replaced, so we're ready to sell those. And we're asking for authority to advertise those for sale and accept sealed bids.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Dr. McLeod seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Item B relates to our Florence Byron Parkway project. And it's authorization for me to sign a large construction notice of intent for coverage under the Large Construction Stormwater General Permit required by DEQ.
I make a motion?
Second.
I made a motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Item C, if you remember, a few months back, we brought in JH&amp;H to look at our courtrooms and circuit. We have a large courtroom and a small courtroom. After, or during COVID, we'd made some renovations to those to, to expand them out a little bit. Now they're asking us to retract them back to kind of the way they were. It also includes some upgrades to the electrical systems that need to be made. The building's about, what, 25, 30 years old? So we're, we've gotten to the point now where JH&amp;H thinks they're ready to advertise the bids. And we're asking for authority to advertise those bids for the courtroom renovations.
Before we take action, I mean, would this be anything to do with the office also? You know, they were wanting some upgrades done in the office.
This is strictly courtrooms, the two courtrooms. We have not addressed the, the office space at this time. I think that's a conversation for later.
Have we received anything from them?
I think everybody's happy at the moment.
Okay.
We're working with Circuit Clerk on doing some work in her office. She's done really an excellent job in reorganizing how that's set up. But we have a little, few more things we want to do in there.
Okay. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Any additional business?
Mr. President, if I may, I, I want to take advantage of just a few minutes that we have while we're in between and waiting for some of our, our guests to arrive. When we talk about the, the bond and, and bond projects, this would be an opportunity for us to kind of revisit that conversation and remind ourselves of some of the bigger picture about the bond issuance. I mentioned, as we were going through getting ready to adopt this resolution today, I mentioned that this, this entire endeavor is based on the board's understanding that we will make what are called capital improvements, capital improvements. These are larger projects that would be outside our normal course of operations where we take the revenues that are afforded and given to the Board of Supervisors for oversight and responsibility. We try, what we try to do is to maintain what we have with, with what abhorrent revenues that we collect. And that does not leave us adequate revenue to take care of larger one-off type projects. And so for us to be able to do the larger projects that benefit all of the citizens of Rankin County, and that's typically some of your bigger ticket items like buildings or significant transportation projects. For us to be able to do those requires us to look at other means of revenue or sources of revenue outside of our normal abhorrent collection process. Otherwise, you would have to make significant adjustments to your abhorrent millage to be able to do the larger projects. And that's not conducive to being a supervisor. What we've discovered. So an avenue that's afforded to us is the issuance of a bond. And that generally allows us to structure larger capital improvement projects over the course of a significant length of time, usually 10 to 15 to 20-plus years. And it allows for us to have a workable repayment obligation that we can cover from our debt service millage item. So that's the process that we're embarking on today. I wanted to remind all of us, what we're talking about doing with these funds are projects that we probably would not be able to do otherwise. And so just as a quick reminder, and it's helpful for the public to know what you guys have been talking about and the kinds of projects that are likely to be coming online here in the future. One of those items is a facility for your District Attorney's Office. A very nice, presentable facility. One that will afford us multiple options to address space requirements across a multiple field spectrum. Not just the DA having a place to operate from, but his current space can then be made available for other court uses that currently is not available. And so there is this domino effect of a new facility having multiple beneficial impacts across how we run and operate county government. One thing that our citizens expect is a functioning court system. One that provides adequate space for the people who are the professionals who do that work to have a place to do that work, to do it effectively and efficiently. And we have great judges and great court clerks and, and incredible staffs. And they need the space to be able to do what they do effectively. Our people benefit because they have a functioning court system that provides access to the courts in a timely manner. So that's one thing that the board is, has said, we need to make sure that we've got an adequate space for the District Attorney. That building is probably one of the highest priority projects that we have for our bond issuance. There's another building that's very important to us. It's the Tax Assessor and the Tax Collector's Office, which would be a satellite office in Flowood. Right now, our citizens in what I call the Northeast Quadrant. It's really the whole north end of Rankin County. Everything north of Lakeland Drive and out into Steve's district. Those folks are able to come to a building that provides contact with the tax collector and the tax assessor rather than having to come all the way into downtown Brandon to get a car tag or to interact with the tax collector or tax assessor's office. They have a place to do that. It's much more convenient. And that has served our citizens well. Currently, those operations are in a rental. We're in a building that we rent, and that is not the most optimal thing for us. We would much rather be out of the rent business and out of the leasing business and get into a building that we own. So this board has said, that's a priority item for us. Let's use the bond to pay for the construction of a new satellite office for our tax collector and tax assessor in Flowood. And so that's, that's another item that we've looked at. A third, that's a facility that is a benefit to all of the citizens of Rankin County, is an animal shelter that, that would replace the current is, uh, an animal shelter that, uh, that would replace the current operations of the animal shelter where we're located on Marquette. Uh, there are a number of reasons why that's, uh, potentially something that the board wants to consider uh, and should consider. And so that is an item that is under consideration. There are a host of other bond projects that have been discussed that are much more specific to individual supervisor districts. But I wanted to mention those three facilities because those are beneficial to all citizens of the county. And so I call those our common bond projects. Uh, there may be others that come online, but this board will retain the ability to decide what it will do with bond proceeds. Whenever they get here, you guys will retain the authority and the exclusive authority to decide how we're gonna use those proceeds, what we're going to create, what we're going to fund. All of that is gonna be within your purview to make those decisions. And so we've got a good start on a bond project list, but by no means is it set and by no means do we know precisely what it is we're gonna utilize those proceeds for. You guys will make that decision. So I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about that, to ask any questions.
Chris.
Yes, sir.
On the tax assessor, tax collector office
Yes, sir.
that we operate out of now and we have for, I don't know, eight years, something like that, ten years? Anyhow. Uh, we, I mean, that satellite office has really grown.
Yes, sir.
And, and services a lot of people. And we cannot add a car window, a drive-through like we have here. And people don't realize how many people come through that car line until you drive up here first of the month or end of the month and you see it all the way out to eighty. Um, we don't have, the building is just not conducive for a drive-through. And then the other thing, like you said, we're renting it and we, because of our operations, well, the rent went up this year. And we can expect that the rent will go up as uh, the economy and the value of the buildings go up. It's, I mean, we expect that. But it's hard to plan when we don't know five years from now what that rent is gonna be. And we also can't move out over a weekend.
That's right.
Because the way we're set up in there with all our records and services, we'd have to have a year to find another spot and relocate. This gives us some control that, well, we do, where we will have control and we'll own the building and we can have a drive-through and service the people.
That's exactly right.
And, and almost the same, I mean, it's a rock's parole from the same place that we're at.
I, I would say just as convenient as the current leased location. The new facility will be just as convenient.
I want my people to understand, it's not just a matter, because they don't care where you be renting it or, but the reason for owning is to where we can have a little control and know what our budgets we can set and things like that.
Precisely. Yep.
And does the county already own that property or that would be part of the bond?
We, we, we just. We have, uh, we have the property where the new tax assessor, tax collector, satellite location, we have it under contract.
Under contract.
Yes, sir. Uh, so actually, Dr. McLeod, we, we want to incorporate the purchase of the property into the bond proceeds part of this.
Right.
Uh, and, in order to do that, we kind of need to have the bond proceeds, uh, in hand. And so we're gonna get the bond proceeds in hand, then we'll go ahead and take the property down.
We got a spot anyway.
We got a spot.
Yep, yep.
A great spot.
And, and too, like I said, I know I'm gonna build a couple of fire stations and I know Steve's gonna build a, a fire station. Like I said, all this stuff is gonna help the community.
Yes.
You know.
Fire ratings.
The fire ratings and, you know, just upgraded facilities. And, uh, like I say, everything's gonna help, you know, help the community.
These, I mean, we're just talking now.
Yes, sir.
We're waiting, we're in limbo, but these fire stations can cut people's insurance, homeowners' insurance in half. And I have seen where people's insurance being reduced, the, the amount they save is enough to pay their county taxes. It offsets enough that their county taxes can be paid out of that savings. And they also have closer fire service than what
Yes.
may be available there now.
That's right. Any other questions?
Can we talk about something else?
We, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yes, sir. Yeah, so I, I stretch, I stretched it about as long as I could stretch it here, uh, to get us, uh, and, you know, guys, it's, it's unusual for us to be at this point in our board meeting where we're actually waiting on going into executive session. Most of the time, I've got folks here who are gonna be a part of our executive session waiting on us, so.
The office might need to ask some questions.
They might, they might, that's, does the office, they all have any questions of us so far? This was a very quick meeting, so in that respect, I'm getting you out of here a little ahead of time.
Addison, you got something?
Okay. I guess, uh, is, is that all we, we got?
Yes, sir, that's all I can, that's all I can think of on that unless y'all got questions.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to go into executive.
All right.
I second.
Steve made a motion going to executive, Brad seconded that motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, that was a motion to the need, to discuss the need to go into executive. And now, I make a motion to go into executive, uh, for
Potential litigation.
Potential litigation.
Uh, potential acquisition of real property.
Potential purchasing of real property.
That's right, and potentially to discuss economic development.
And potentially discuss some economic development, that's the need.
I'll second that.
Steve made a motion for the need to go into executive session. Brad seconded that motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now in the executive.